Well, good morning.
Good morning.
This is September 8th, 2022, meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will now come to order. Reverend Shane Eisner, pastor of the First Christian Church located here in Montgomery, will now offer the invocation. Reverend Eisner?
Thank you, ma'am. Will you all please join me in a spirit of prayer or reflection? Gracious Spirit, divine counselor, whose wisdom drifts through our lives like a refreshing breeze on a hot summer night, help us to listen. For too often we turn our attention from your insights of goodness and justice, decency and accountability, and instead we care more for personal agendas, for petty divisions. Oh, that we would feel your wind anew, the cool calm of patience, the blessed invigoration of hope. Indeed, in our schools, we have counselors who model such wise giftedness with excellence, and for them we offer praise and thanks. May all who impact our children's future, this board, educators, parents, janitors, be guided by, relieved by the glorious gusts of wisdom that come from you, Spirit of wonder, of truth, of everybody. Help us to listen, which we pray, in whatever name we know you best, confident that all prayers offered in love find their way home to you. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Eisner. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, free, dear, and just as for all. Before we call the roll today, I want to welcome new superintendent of Montgomery County, Superintendent Melvin Brown. Would you like to stand and be welcomed? Now, we'll have the roll call. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Chestnut?
Present.
Governor Ivy?
Present.
Dr. McCarthy?
Present.
Mrs. McRae?
Present.
Dr. Reynolds?
Present.
Dr. Richardson?
Present.
Mrs. West?
Here.
Mrs. Segler?
Here.
Governor, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We will now consider a motion to approve the agenda for the September 8th, 2022, meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education.
I move approval of the agenda, Governor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
The agenda is approved. We will now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the August 11th, 2022, meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Ms. Thornton, is anyone signed up to speak today?
Yes, ma'am. We have four speakers.
All right. Attorney Swann, I'll ask you to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you for the recognition, Governor Ivy. It looks like we have two sets of individuals on two different topics that are in front of the board at this time. And again, I want to thank everybody for being here, and also thank the members of the board as well as the public. This is definitely an important function that we provide to give the public an opportunity to comment on matters before the board. Wanted to discuss a couple of ground rules. Also, if you will, please introduce yourself and the topic that you're speaking upon and who you represent, if any. Also, there's supposed to be no questions directed to the board, and then please keep your matters only those that are on the current agenda that has been passed out and has been placed on the board agenda. Also, please observe all decorum, and you are limited to two minutes to speak, and at this time I will get a list of the folks, and then what I'll do, I'll give you a heads up when there's about 30 seconds left, so you know when to stop. But like I said, it looks like we have two different topics that are up for public comment, and the first is on pertaining to certain teaching techniques, and I have Dana Pig and Rachel Mobley signed up. Is either one of those here present?
I'll go ahead and get you started. Just when you start speaking, I'll read some.
Perfect, thank you. Dana Pig, I am from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. I received my high school education in District 7. As an educator, I am here to tell you guys something that as educators you should already know. Criminalizing a robust discussion, age appropriate, but robust discussion about very important topics like sexuality, race, forcing your educators to sell lies to children in the form of half-truths is poisoning our communities. It's continuously dividing us on topics that you all claim to share an interest on, a Christian interest. There's nothing Christian about criminalizing education. I hope that you guys will weigh these topics very carefully as our educators fight to provide the best possible education to your children each and every day and who are finding themselves increasingly not supported by our leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pig. And next we have Rachel Mobley.
Hi, Rachel Mobley, teacher for eight years. I also taught AP English for a duration of that time, so I know the value and the importance of very specific language choices in documents. First, thank you for all the progress that you bring to our schools across the state. I was, as a teacher, I know how much of the support we rely on you to do your job well, and in order for us to do our job well, it's a direct result of the decisions that y'all make here. I also know that your job is a thankless job, so thank you for what you do. With teacher shortages at an all-time high, I hope that the board today will reconsider some of the language used in Rule 290-040, the proposal, making a few revisions that I've already suggested some language changes for your consideration would go a long way to raise the morale of a severely disheartened teacher workforce. Subjective language currently found throughout the rule should be revised. The consequences listed in the rule are too severe to allow for anything other than perfect clarity. If left unrevised, an aggressive parent complaint could result in a valuable teacher or counselor's termination and loss of certificate. With better clarity achieved through the suggested revisions, it would provide administrators with a guide to use in any investigation to determine wrongdoing should a complaint or accusation be leveled against a teacher. It would comfort teachers to know that an investigation's results would not be based on subjective language. It would ensure a safer, more inclusive classroom environment for the LGBTQ students, and it would help avoid costly litigation with AEA in the event that a teacher is terminated unlawfully due to the subjective nature of this rule. In paragraph 2, the terms indoctrinate and promote. Paragraph 3, the term engage, the terms age appropriate and developmentally appropriate, the sources cited. As guidance, require clarification about appropriate application. Paragraph 3A, the consequences listed should both include educational and disciplinary measures as options. Paragraph 4, the terms such conduct referring to acts that are harmful and legitimate require clarification. And paragraph 5, the terms access and review require clarification. I hope that the board would consider voting, allowing me to continue beyond two minutes.
That's, I'm sorry, that's the rule. So you've got five to six seconds left. You want to wrap up?
That's all I can do without a vote to continue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you both. The next is the, I believe it's item M, that's on the board agenda pertaining to mental health service coordinators, and it looks like at this time I have Dr. Daniel Birdsong, Marlo Young, and Laura Browder is signed up. If you individuals could come down, please. And first up is Dr. Birdsong.
Good morning, Governor Ivy, Dr. Mackey, and members of the board. My name is Dr. Daniel Birdsong, and I am current president of the Alabama School Counselor Association. I am representing myself and the Alabama School Counselor Association. I would like to briefly speak in support of the adoption of the new Alabama Administrative Code Rule pertaining to the Mental Health Services Coordinator. This new code clarifies ambiguous language included in the Mental Health Service Coordinator law and clearly distinguishes between mental health services implemented by licensed mental health providers through the Mental Health Service Coordinator and school counseling services implemented by certified school counselors through school counseling programs. School counseling programs promote and support all students' success by increasing students' college and career readiness and improving student outcomes, including achievement, attendance, and discipline. Through their work, certified school counselors address critical domains, including students' academic, career, and personal social development, and their services are needed now more than ever. As the board will recognize five outstanding school counseling programs today that have demonstrated improved student outcomes, school counseling programs matter, and they are integral to schools' academic mission and total educational programs. The new code rule will ensure that all students continue to benefit from school counseling support services that they deserve. I ask that you vote yes today in favor of this important rule change. Thank you for your time and support.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Birdsong. The next up is Marlo Young.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Marlo Young, and I'm the Mental Health Service Coordinator for Escambia County School System. First, I would like to thank the State Board of Education for all that they do for our students throughout the state of Alabama. The position of the Mental Health Service Coordinator has been a great addition to the local school systems, and I'm grateful to have an opportunity to work in this capacity. I collaborate with the school administration, counselors, faculty, and staff to help our students propel academically and reach their desired goals. We work alongside our school counselors as a support for our students in various ways, such as character education, social and emotional learning, and that community liaison that connects students and parents to those Tier 3 resources and services. We assist our school systems in promoting a culture of respect in peer-to-peer and youth-to-adult relationships. We do this by working with our students to learn and strengthen those skills, such as self-management, self-awareness, social and positive life skills, and in return, we have seen this has reduced bullying and peer pressure significantly. We are all working as a team to help support our students. However, I do feel that the opt-in policy for the Mental Health Service Coordinator and Mental Health Services has caused some confusion for many because it appears to be a duplication of what we already have in place as it relates to ongoing counseling and/or mental health services. When a student is referred to these Tier 3 services, it is an automatic process that parents' permission has to be in place before services can be initiated and a therapeutic treatment can begin. This is obtained by the local community mental health agency that we are in partnership with. As the Mental Health Service Coordinator, I help to confirm yearly with the agency what students are continuing services that particular school year, and if the child is under the age of 14, that the parent's consent has to be updated for that school year. So as a former school-based children's therapist, I can attest that this procedure of obtaining required consent from parents and the collaboration with the school counselors and admin of students receiving ongoing services. So I truly thank you all for allowing us to serve our students in the capacity of a Mental Health Service Coordinator. Thank you.
We have one more individual signed up to speak on the Mental Health Service Coordinators, Ms. Laura Browder, and I've been told she's not here, but I wanted to give her one more opportunity just in case she shows up. Okay. Well, Governor, that concludes the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Swann. Item G, unfinished business. Ms. Thornton, is there any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
Okay. Also, I have a proclamation here to enter into the record declaring that September 2022 is Workforce Development Month in the state. New business. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for Amanda Blake and Shaniqua Robertson, school counselors at Daphne Middle School in Baldwin County's school system located in the State School Board District 1 for the 2021 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Unanimous vote. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for Summer Davis, Kristy Eldiken, and Katrina Ken, school counselors at ER Dixon Elementary School in Mobile County School System located in State School Board District 1 for the 2021 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We will now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for Carissa Davis and Janie Evans, school counselors at J. Larry Newton Elementary School in Baldwin County School System, also located in State School Board District 1 for the 2021 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for Shannon Parker, school counselor at Malachi Wilkinson Middle School in the Birmingham City School System located in State School Board District 4 for the 2021 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
No more problem.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for Brandy Shanklin, Latonya Jimmerson, and Emily Woodroof, school counselors at Hillcrest High School in the Tuscaloosa County School System, also located in State School Board District 4 for the 2021 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction. Is there a motion to adopt?
No more problem.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider a resolution to recognize the Alabama inaugural Purple Star class of 2022, which consists of 12 school districts and 53 schools.
Governor, with pride, I make the motion.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
We'll now consider a resolution proclaiming October 2022 as statewide parent engagement month in Alabama.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor show by the raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider a resolution to approve a Class B Early Childhood Education P-3 program for the University of Montevallo.
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider a motion to approve the Alabama State Department of Education Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget.
So move, Governor.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by the upraised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Abstain.
Vote Karis, Governor.
We'll now consider a motion to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-4- period 06 pertaining to the local mechanic certification. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a motion to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-1- period 01 pertaining to annual apportionment of foundation program funds.
I make the motion, Governor.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
We'll now consider a motion to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-40-040- dot 02 pertaining to certain teaching techniques. Is there a motion to adopt?
I make that motion, Governor.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. We'll now consider a motion to adopt new Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-4-5-08 pertaining to Mental Health Service Coordinators. Is there a motion to adopt?
I so move, Governor. I'd like to make a comment if it's a second.
Is there a second?
I so second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. In that motion, under item 5, there's a reference, and I will read it for the public's consumption. "No student of K-12 public school under age 14 may be allowed to participate on ongoing school counseling services, including but not limited to, et cetera, unless specific written instruction has been granted by the student's parents unless there's an imminent threat to health of the student of others." I had a conversation with several superintendents and with Superintendent Mackey over the language "ongoing school counseling services," and I think one of the speakers today mentioned that concern, and I think Dr. Mackey will be issuing some clarification of exactly what ongoing counseling services includes and does not include, so that no school counseling program that has ongoing functions will feel that this limits some of their activities, and some schools have not really understood how to interpret this, but I think we will adopt it with clarification. Comment, Dr. Mackey?
Any more discussion?
Governor, I plan to vote against this because there are too many questions that I still have. I understand the legislature played a major role in this particular addition to the Administrative Code. Once this is approved, the way that I read it, the board, unless the superintendent so desires to make a recommendation for the board's approval, the board is no longer really involved. I guess we could express our concerns through the superintendent, but it is left up to the department, and I do have some concerns about some of the things that will not turn to the board for a vote. So I do plan to vote against it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Vote Karis, Governor.
Item N, as in not. Y'all, today is important that we take action to close the gap between the graduation rate and the college and career readiness rate. For the classes of 2020 and 2021, the Alabama graduation rate was 92%, and the college and career ready rate was 76%, which equals a 16 percentage point gap. Closing the gap between the college and career readiness rate and the graduation rate is about more than just numbers. This is about closing opportunity gaps by making sure that our students are ready to take the next step. Parents want their children to graduate high school with the skills needed to excel in college and career. And with eight college and career readiness indicators, we now have more ways for students to demonstrate college and career readiness than ever before. The rule will take effect in 2028, which gives us plenty of time to close in barriers to access. We must use this vote as momentum for ensuring that every student has access to quality college and career readiness indicators. Due to partnerships with business and industry groups like the Alabama Workforce Council and the Business Education Alliance of Alabama, and education providers like the Alabama Community College System, we are developing innovative new ways for students to earn in-demand skills. I hope you will certainly join me in moving to close the gap between the college and career readiness rate once and for all. We'll now consider a motion to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-3-1- period 02 pertaining to regulations governing public schools. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Governor. I would support this resolution, and I particularly draw attention to it, that this is an opening of period for comment. This is the motion to adopt the intent, to put before the public the intent to adopt this motion, and I certainly hope that the constituents across the state will respond. I've had several responses from pro groups, and I've asked that they also include that comment in written form once we adopt the motion. motion today to declare our intent to adopt the code. Thank you, Governor, for the time.
In line with that, Governor, I have a few questions of Dr. Mackey. Please.
Very good.
Yes. Dr. Mackey, first of all, in line with the CCR indicators, relative to superintendents and options, will there be flexibility in reference to special need students? Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, ma'am.
I know it mentioned something, but...
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to. So one of the things that we talked about a little bit last month in the work session, we're still working on, is for those students who are cognitively disabled, so those students now that would be on a, you know, a special program, not just an IEP program, but students who have to be on an alternate assessment pathway and those kind of things. We have some students that are, do not take the regular assessments, they take alternate assessment. And one of the concerns that's been raised is what credential would be available to those folks. Of course, as you know, item 10 is any additional change made by the state board. We would plan to come to you with some suggestions, and don't have those in place, but as the Governor mentioned, this would not affect until the class of 2028. But we do know, we've looked at some other states, there are some states that have done some things, essentially looking at if they complete their program of study, what's laid out in their IEP, then assuming that's a good program of study, then allowing that to serve as their CCR, their credential.
Okay.
So that would be a little different, I'm sorry, ma'am, but just, it's not, it would not go through, and the confusion, not your confusion, but confusion out there in the public is, well, it says credentials, career tech credentials. So those wouldn't necessarily be career tech credentials. They're not falling under that, that component. We see them as falling under number 10, a separate pathway for those students.
So that would be also in line when we talk about advanced placement students who then would not be on a career tech track also, correct?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. So it could be any one of these 10, so we still would leave in place, if they score a benchmark on any area, any subject area of the ACT, a three or higher on any advanced placement exam, a four or higher on any IB exam, or earning any college credit while in high school. And that could be a two-year college credit, a technical college credit, or a four-year college credit, but any college credit. And then the ACT work keys exam, which is where most of our students, more students than any other area, get their CCR now through the ACT work keys exam.
Okay, and last thing, would superintendents have an option, perhaps? I know one superintendent mentioned that if a student did not meet any of these indicators, perhaps an option where in this district they have like a skills trade program that's provided by another entity. If a student completed that and then at that point also got a workforce credential, could that count? Would they have the flexibility to allow that to count as a CCR, or at least us look at that?
Yes, ma'am. And so obviously, we'd have to look at each one of those, but what we have now is a committee that looks at those credentials, and we have local school districts that work with the local business and develop new credentials, and there's a process they can go through. We're stepping that up. We're actually working now with the A-triple-C-P, which is a continuum between the Commerce Department, us, and the two-year college system, post-secondary system, to look at the credentials and make sure they truly are getting students ready for a career. But there's, there are, there is a pathway for new ones to be introduced. I think, I'm gonna have the number wrong, but there's around 150 currently credentials out there. Now, most high schools will offer a small number of that. They may offer anywhere from, you know, three or four or five to 50 of those programs, but there's 150 options out there, and they grow every year as we add more.
All right, and lastly, to make aware, if this does pass, two superintendents, that all of them are fully aware of what this entails. I know some of them, well, someone mentioned, when they had their meeting in June, it was not mentioned, I said, well, because it had not been brought to us, but as we go forward with SSA to just keep them fully in the loop to try to better understand. That's what I should say.
Yes, ma'am. We will do.
Okay.
We will. So just to clarify, I did mention it in my comments.
In June, that person didn't hear it.
It was the main part of my comments to the superintendents.
That person didn't hear it, so I'm gonna get on him or her.
But that person might not have been in the room at the time.
I'm gonna get on him or her.
Yes, ma'am. No, but I will, so I'll be speaking to superintendents on the Tuesday before our October board meeting, and it's already, I actually met with Mr. Hollinsworth yesterday and told him this will be my number one talking point, this and going through the budget. But yes, ma'am, we'll also send them some written...
Thank you.
Those are an understand, I mean, people go in and out of the rooms, they have phone calls, so it's, they, so it's easy to miss that, but if the board adopts this intent today, then we're gonna send them some written correspondence.
Okay.
So it's not just whether you were in the room when the superintendent was talking about it. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Governor, thank you.
Dr. Mackey, I have one more concern, question rather. I'm sorry, did I, go ahead, ma'am. I'm sorry. I defer to my esteemed colleague.
I have two concerns. English learners?
If your microphone will...
Sorry. I have two concerns. One is English learners. I represent District Seven, and in Franklin County, Russellville City, we have many students who are English learners. How will this affect them? And the second issue that I have are those students who may not have IEPs, but they're struggling students, and they struggle all the way through school. I saw this happen when the graduation exam was in effect, and I saw students who tried very hard and succeeded with tutoring to pass their courses, but could not pass some section of the graduation exam. And I saw the faces of those children and those parents who were told, "You cannot walk across that stage and get your diploma," and it was devastating. So I am concerned about how it will affect those students.
Yes, ma'am. Do you want me to talk about those, ma'am, please?
Yes.
So, so, so first, the EL, that, that isn't, I mean, that's an open question on EL performance in schools at all. So there's not a separate pathway for EL students. You know, what we would certainly hope is by the time they get to graduation, if they earn a high school diploma, means they've passed the 24 credits required by the board, they've passed four, you know, high-level math courses, and hopefully that would mean that they would, there was some credential, whether that was ACT or AP course or credit, or a career tech program or an internship, that there would be something they would demonstrate, that mastery, and earn one of these CCRs. But there's not a separate pathway for EL students. It would, you've not asked for this, but it'd be difficult, probably impossible, to create something because under federal law, we can't have a dual pathway for, for students who are not native English speakers. We did at one time, so I don't, I don't know if that fully answers that, but I think that the answer, all I have right now is that they would just, you know, they would have the same high expectation to meet one. It is obviously difficult if they come in, in high school, not speaking English, but it's, and I would submit it's not just the CCR, but just earning the diploma is a challenge for students who come in. Now, it's obviously different. There are a lot of things in the school districts. You mentioned they are doing amazing work with students who come to them who are six, seven years old and don't speak English. But if you come to one of our school districts and you're 17 and don't speak English, then that's obviously a challenge all the way around. On the other one, we, there is always a struggle with students who do not qualify for the alternate assessment, but still had cognitive or, or special education issues that prevent them from being able to, to progress from grade to grade. In fact, that's, of course, the definition for special education, students who cannot progress from grade to grade without special services. So, again, we are looking at those. I, I will submit to you that, that I think the vast majority, I would like to say that all of our special education students can meet a CCR. I know that's, it's, it's difficult. They need a special, specialized program, but at one time, and, and that precedes almost everyone who's sitting at this desk today, but the board did have two diplomas, one for special education students and one for non-special education students. And as you know, we had a lot of trouble with that because it's, the federal law does not allow that, and so we had a state graduation rate, a federal graduation rate, and we resolved that with the federal government by saying we wouldn't do that again, that we would have only one diploma for all students. So, so even though we can create special pathways for those cognitively disabled students who qualify for the alternate assessment, that next group that you're worried about, and I know you really are, and we've talked, you and I have talked about it some, and I know other board members have brought it to me too, that, that are lower performing, that struggle even with their IEP, but they don't qualify for the alternate assessment. We, we probably, I'll be careful what I say, my staff are all sweating, probably could not create a separate pathway just for them because I think that would be considered discrimination. But we can look at what are pathways and credentials that possibly those, those students could earn. In all fairness, a lot of our special ed students do meet CCR now. We have districts, as you know, who graduate well over 95 percent. We had two districts last year that 100 percent of their graduates got the CCR, and they both have over 10 percent special need students. So they do, they, we have found pathways. Making those pathways available to everyone across the state is a challenge that we have to meet if the board chooses ultimately to adopt this. So, you, any follow-ups? I'm sorry, I hope I tried to answer up, if that's okay.
Dr. Mackey, I do have a question, a different concern in regards to some of the schools that are in my district. We know that every child should leave high school with being college and career ready, but we also understand that the offerings across the state are not equitable. So what are the plans for providing resources, more offerings, so that it does not matter what zip code the child lives in, that they have similar experiences? We see the discrepancies, they're glaring in my district. Will there be equitable funding to ensure that they have similar experiences? What is the plan?
Yes, ma'am. So, very good question, and I know that's a strong concern for you and for others. So let me address it two, in two sections, though. So first one, there, even though there are 10 options, essentially, they're, they're sort of bifurcated. There's, there's a testing option, and that could be AP, IB, ACT, or the work keys. The work keys is a little different because it is a career readiness assessment. The others are purely academic assessments. So one of, one prong of that is the work we are doing, that I know we discussed some at retreat and, and in the last work session, and we can keep talking about it, but to push more advanced placement courses and high-level opportunities out to, to those schools, schools in your district across the state, that, where there's greater need. You know, originally, for instance, AP was something that just a few high schools in Alabama had. Through our partnership with A-plus, we've been able to push out lots more AP credits and the AP training to more schools. And with some changes, it's, we're accelerating that because we're now, we've been able to, they used to have to adopt more, I don't know, I probably, we'll get into it, we can get into it more in the work session, but we've made it easier for some of those schools that may not have all the, the resources to offer AP. So AP, ACT prep, that's one thing. We don't want to write off and assume that students who go to a rural school, like I went to, are not gonna be able to do well on an AP course. So we've got to get those kinds of programs out there for everybody. The second piece of that one, so I'm gonna divide this two-pronged approach into three, is dual enrollment. So we know that the greatest area of growth for CCR right now is dual enrollment, and when we look at that across the state, there are high schools that have three or four or five, sometimes more, dual enrollment agreements. So multiple two-year and four-year colleges, technical colleges, that, that offer dual enrollment opportunities on the high school campus, on the college campus, and online. We have other high schools in underserved areas that may only have one, and we may have some that actually don't have any. We're trying to figure out if we have any. There are not supposed to be any that don't have any because every high school is in a service region of the two-year, the community college system, and they offer dual enrollment everywhere. But we're not saying everybody, every high school takes advantage of it. So we have to figure that out. Ms. McCray's got a point on that, I think.
Is that at no cost to the student and the family?
Yes, ma'am. So the legislature appropriates $26 million to the community college system to pay tuition for students. That would have to grow, so it's interesting things. We'll talk about the budget and our appropriation request in the work session, but that doesn't come through us, but I would think, and I've had conversations already with the, the community college system, that they will have to partner with us to grow their programs for us to reach this goal. Yes, ma'am. There are some that cost students, though. So, for instance, well, I won't name a high school, but I talked to a superintendent recently that has four, has, I think, three four-year programs and a two-year program that he has agreements with. The students who go to the two-year program are comped because of that agreement. The ones who go to the four, if they go to a four-year college, they have to, the students have to pay a tuition. So there is that cost for some of them. And then the other one, Dr. Chestnut, is, is on the career tech piece, and that's the piece that, you know, you and I have talked about, and other board members have brought up to me, because we have some, some high schools that offer 45, 50 career tech programs. So there are all these pathways, and then we have, especially in rural schools, they may offer four. We have, we, we actually have a county right now we're working with that has had four for years, and we're helping them set up a fifth one. Now, that does come through, the career tech initiative money that you request from the legislature that we, we dole out here from the department in grants, and so there is a plan to help them grow, but they have to sustain it. So I don't, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna lay out a rosy picture and not tell the whole truth. Obviously, once we help them go in and buy equipment, set up a program, they have to sustain the program. That doesn't go on, that career tech initiative grant doesn't necessarily go on forever. And in some cases, the programs they have are legacy programs that are not necessarily attractive to students. So we have more students now wanting to get into high-tech sorts of programs, computer programs, even machining programs, with their machining programs where they're actually using a computer to do the machining, not old-fashioned, holding the, the lathe yourself, working the lathe. So, so that is my response to that, is that through our career tech initiative, I think we have to keep asking for more money, to give more grants, to make sure we're expanding career tech opportunities, and hopefully incentivizing districts to work together. So the, for, for instance, in your area of the state, we can't put, not saying we can't put, is unlikely that we will be able to afford a really high-tech career center in every county seat. So we have to find ways for, that offers 40 programs because there aren't enough students to support 40 programs, enough teachers. So we have to find a way that, that they do some cross-collaboration. We already do see that in some parts of the state, especially between county and city school districts, and we do have some programs where multiple county districts go together and support one another. But that, we'll have to continue to grow it. I, I will not offer to you that everything is already in place, but I will say this, that the vast majority of people I've talked to in the districts that I, that have talked to me feel like this is the right direction, and it'll put some, help put some pressure on local communities and, and the legislature and others to step up and say, okay, this is gonna be a rule, now we have to go in and build what it takes to make sure students meet the credentials.
So, Dr. Mackey, am I hearing you say that you have a plan that will provide equitable funding for those school systems that are currently not able to provide the offerings that are available in some of your more affluent areas? So when the funding comes out, I want to make sure I'm hearing you say that those school systems that may have three or four offerings versus 40... that those school systems that may have three or four offerings versus forty or fifty will be the priority when the funding rolls out?
Priority for growth grants, but here the other part of why I say, because there's this maintenance piece. And, and it is student-driven because, so for instance, if you go into a county, I mean, I have three counties, had the discussion yesterday. We have three counties, not all in your area, but they're contiguous. One of them is in your area. And together, they have, the, all three counties with all their schools, K through twelve, added together, they have fewer students than probably fifty high schools in the region. And so, I can't say that we're going to offer forty programs in each of those counties. I don't want you to mishear me because there are not enough students there to support those programs. And, and we can't possibly hire a teacher who has, you know, two students in a class all day long. So, I think we're moving toward more equity, certainly using those career tech initiative funds to try to help these, especially poor rural counties, set up more programs. But you used a word there, equitable. I don't want to be, I don't want to, to paint the picture that all of a sudden everybody's going to have the same per-child funding across the state because I don't, I don't think we're there. Does that, does that help? I'm not trying to muddy the water, I just want to make sure I don't over, don't, uh, overpromise.
Well, I just know that we need to have a plan in place where we're intentional about making sure that every child has an opportunity to succeed. And so, I'm, I'm listening to hear that those school systems that are currently not at the level as others, I want to hear that they will be a priority, even if it means combining programs, having maybe tri-county programs. That's what I'm listening for, but that's not what I'm hearing, and so that's my concern.
Slightly.
Again, if we don't do that, then we are contributing to an even wider gap of services. And so the kids that may benefit the most or may need it the most lose again. And so, that's my question. I still want to be clear that this is a priority because we see the, I see the discrepancies across District Five. What's available in one school district is not available in another. I've visited all of them. But I've, I'm a firm believer that regardless of a child's zip code, they should be afforded similar opportunities. If you're going to mandate a requirement that involves all students, then there should be some type of plan in place to ensure, again, that they have similar experiences.
Yes, ma'am. So I can assure you that that's a priority for us. But for instance, I'm going to give you an example, I will not name the district. It's not a district in your area, but what, the county that I mentioned that we've worked with that had four programs. It has been a desire of this department that they would go to five programs for many years. But the local school board did not want to. And they had to change the leadership, and they said, we now want to do five programs. And so we've helped them with funding, we've gone in and bought them equipment. We have, so through that career tech initiative, we've gotten them up. Now, it's their responsibility to keep running it. But I, but it, it is a local-state partnership, so it is a priority on our part. But we do have to have, it takes funding, so we have to, that, you know, the legislature will continue to have to grow that. A lot of districts have been able to use ESER funds because one of the uses of ESER funds is to build out career tech programs. And they, a lot of them are doing that, buying new equipment, opening new programs. But then they have to use one of their teacher units to fund it, keep it going, you know. So, so I hope that, not trying to be evasive, I just want to be honest with you, that we can go in and help, but we can't maintain programs in every county in the state.
I want to say one more thing. I think this is a great idea, and I would love to see it work, but I don't think we're ready for it yet. And I think it would be punitive for our poor and marginalized.
Dr. Richardson had her mic on, I'm not sure she had another question?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a more succinct question. In item four, it says earning college credit while in high school. I think you made some particular reference when you said that includes technical schools and other things. So that might be more clear, it's some post-secondary credit, could be private schools, private institutions.
Yes, sir.
But although the language you used is college credit, I think in your explanation, you said it was broader in scope, correct?
Yes, sir. So the word college credit is what we currently use? Now, remember, this is, you're, we already have this in place, and it is a part of the school report card. The difference, so it's a requirement for the school on their report card now. It is what the proposal is, is to make it a requirement for the students to graduate. But the current language, Dr. Reynolds, is college credit, but that includes any college credit, including technical college, you know, or the community college or academic four-year college credit.
So it really means post-secondary credit, right?
Yes, sir.
Not just?
No, post-secondary credit, yes, sir.
Dr. Mackey, in announcing this in June and July, and speaking with superintendents, have you had any negative feedback from any superintendents in the state? I know I've not received any in District Two.
No, ma'am. The, the only feedback I've gotten from superintendents is the question about special education students, and would there be a pathway for those special needs students? And that's always a concern.
And just to clarify, this vote today is to open this discussion up in a more broad sense, to give all parties, all stakeholders, the opportunity to reach out to their board members and to receive more information from them, should they have any questions or concerns about this adoption.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So all you're voting on today is the intent to adopt. The earliest the board could adopt the rule and codify it would be the November board meeting because it's open for forty-five days of public comment. As an example, today, in today's work session, you're going to be talking again about a rule around alternate teaching programs outside of colleges of ed. The legislature passed an act, we came to you in June with a proposal. There's been a lot of public feedback since the intent to adopt. And so the board, we have not brought it to the board for a final vote until, not saying everybody will eventually always agree, but until all the questions are answered. So, it could come back to the board as early as November. It could, certainly if there's lots of questions and y'all wanted to delay a vote, you, you could delay a vote. The only caveat to that is this, that we are, and I, I know it sounds way off, but the current proposal is to apply this to the next graduation cohort, which begins in the fall of twenty-three, so the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which are the graduates of twenty-eight, which seems like a long time off. But if, if the board were to say, wait until next spring to adopt something, then it would be really hard to make it in effect because we have to, we, we cannot, I don't want to say we cannot, there's legal jeopardy if we begin changing the graduation requirements on a cohort once they've started the ninth grade. So they're supposed to come in with set graduation requirements so they know what those are, rather than being changed midway. So, so that's the only timeline we are sort of on.
And is it, in your professional experience, your recommendation? Because this will add value to students and value to the high school diploma for Alabama?
I think it, it standardizes the diploma across the state. It does, it worries me, and it worries everybody up here. Whether we all, we don't all agree on everything, but every piece of it, but everybody up here is worried that the diploma mean the same thing, no matter where you graduate high school, and that the diploma is valued. When we had a graduation exam, for the goods and the bads of it, and that's another thing we could argue all day on, but the graduation exam had, was the same that students had to pass, whether they were at a very high-performing school, or a low-performing school, a rural school, or an intercity school, or a suburban school. Everybody had to pass the same exam. And so it brought some standardization to the, the exam. When the high school graduation exam went away for reasons, I mean, there were legitimate reasons for that because the board at the time was really wanting to move more toward ACT. And so we adopted the ACT as our academic measure. But it meant that we, we no longer had that standardization. I think what this does is create some standardization where there's a minimum number of credentials, that there's flexibility at the district. But when a student graduates, they would also have a CCR demonstrating that they had not only a diploma, but they had met one of these criteria, which are, even though there's flexibility, they're true across all schools. So if they make the, the benchmark on ACT reading, that's the same every school in America. Whereas if they earn a welding certification, that's the same at every school in America. So I think it adds value to our diploma because it standardizes the diploma. It is concerning to, I think, to all of us, and I can speak for myself, that we have schools with a graduation rate is over ninety percent, and fewer than half of their students get any, any ACT, work keys, all the, the career tech programs get any credential. We have other schools that a hundred percent of their students get credentialed. And so, there's obviously a gap in there, we need to, to continue to, to close that gap. And I think we all, we all agree we need to close the gap. The question is whether there should be a requirement. You didn't ask this, Ms. Westman, if you'd allow me to elaborate just a little more. I do think it would put the onus on parents and students to, okay, this is a requirement I have to meet, just like passing high school, you know, the, the twenty-four credits we require. A lot of students wouldn't take those, some of those courses, except that the board said, we're going to have a minimum of twenty-four everybody's going to have to take. So it puts the onus on the student to, to make that a priority.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Governor.
Ms. Bell?
I don't think that now is the time to vote on this, even if it is the intent to adopt. And even though we have a forty-five-day period, and with all of these concerns, with all of these unknowns, with all the questions, and with the reactions that I have received from not only parents, where you just mentioned parents and students, that that will be their personal responsibility. And that's certainly a big problem in education today, is that personal responsibility has gone missing. We don't see it anymore. And unfortunately, only in rare cases. But the bottom line is that I don't think we're ready to vote on this. I don't think the rush is worth it. I think the questions are certainly there. And when you talk about uniformity, you're talking about ten different possibilities to meet a college and career-ready standard. I had retired and current counselors tell me, guidance counselors, tell me, so, does this mean that we're going to spend the last couple of months making sure that every student has this? The students who are already taking a lot of the AP courses or an international baccalaureate program, that's not going to be an issue. But the other students, and that's the largest number, will be, and should be, a concern. I, I just, I think right now is not the time to look at this. I've heard it said that, that business and industry is the customer, but really the customer, if you want to put, call a child a customer, but the parents, they are the ones that we need to listen to. And people are just pleading, they're begging. Parents who have not been engaged before want to be engaged because they have seen so many things they didn't see before, we experienced the COVID limitations. I think this will, and having been here long enough to see one diploma go and another one come, and have two or three, and have for an advanced diploma, you know, that special part of that diploma, having the exit exam, seeing the reasons why we left it, the reasons why we, I would get at the end of the school year, calls from parents saying, my child couldn't pass. The biggest one I got called, that was the social studies exit exam. And you remember that? But this will be along the same lines. I foresee having phone calls, and I love phone calls, I'm not complaining. But I will complain if a child, at the very last minute, is told they cannot graduate because they didn't meet one of these standards. And I know as a father of three sons, you can relate to how that impact, what that impact will have on a family and on children, just on everyone, on the community. But I just, I think we're not ready. And I think what has already been said, we should listen to that. And I think we need to wait, even if there's a forty-five-day waiting period. Forty-five days, I don't think, based on the comments that I've received from both parents and those who will be dealing with counselors, some retired, I think it will be a nightmare in the end if we don't go about this. Not only, you mentioned money and the, the problems with funding certain programs in certain areas of the state. That's the legislature's responsibility. We don't put something in place without that partnership and knowing that we have that kind of support. I foresee, and, and I know in Montgomery County, they're talking about a budget that, looking at fewer students, we're looking at a potential recession, which to me is very wise. I'm a graduate of Montgomery Public School, so I look forward to anything I can do to help them. But appreciate your, everything that I'm hearing, great job. But bottom line is, I'm going to vote no, even though it's the intent to adopt, we're not ready. I'm not ready to vote, and I, and I don't think that parents, we talked about some of the superintendents haven't heard about it, parents were shocked. And I think, well, I had a few calls after a local television station did a, a report, and they said, what, what's going on? And, you know, I told them, I forwarded the email with that list, and I, I could tell you a lot of things they said, but they didn't like it. And it was a pretty good variety of people.
Governor.
Ms. Bell, we got to move on.
And all I want to do is say I concur and I understand. And the phone calls from which I've been receiving have been from the principals and the parents and the students, and, and the school staff, like the counselors. I do not think we're ready. What I worry most about, my number-one thing under everything I ever ask myself, is this, what is the best for children? And at this point, to me, why put in a requirement to graduate? We can move our standards forward, we can put forth all these wonderful ideas, but we also know about the reality of mental health. Our kids are under enough stress, we don't need to be adding. I know it's five years, but five years, let me just tell you, it's going to be, I can't even find what happened to Eastern, and here we are already down, you know, looking at, you know, Christmas. But we've got to have a reality check of what we do impacts our students and the stress of those that are struggling or not doing, you know, maybe coming to that point and maybe not being able to graduate. And I'm not in favor of opting in or opting out or waivers. We need to have a clear and, you know, decisive idea about which I have to concur, that it's just not right for our students at this time. Thank you, Governor.
I remind the board that we are still on item N. And we started this discussion with, it's important that we take action to close the gap between graduation rate and the college and career readiness rate. We know there's a sixteen-point gap. And the rule will take effect in 2028, which gives us plenty of time to work through a whole lot of this, and we can have a whole lot more meetings if y'all want to. But I sure hope y'all will join me in moving to close the gap between the college and the career readiness once and for all. So we're now to consider a motion to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-3-1- period O2 pertaining to regulations governing school, public schools. Is there a motion to adopt?
Governor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Big problem?
We have a motion and a second, we just need a vote.
I'm sorry?
We had a motion and a second.
We had a motion and a second. We just need a vote.
All right, we need a vote. All those in favor, show by the raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Vote carries.
All right, now we move on to item O. Alabama Public Charter School Commission nominees. In accordance with Alabama Code, Speaker of the House, Matt McCutcheon, has made recommendations for one position to the Alabama Charter School Commission. The nominees are Louis Farah and Debbie Elvis. Board members in favor of Louis Farah, please raise your hand. Board members in favor of Debbie Elvis, please raise your hand.
Of staying.
Louis Farah has the most votes. Louis Farah.
Louis Farah is the nominee. All right. Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
No, ma'am. There is none today.
Do you have a report?
Yes, Governor, I do have a report. Now thank you for the time. First, I do want to mention, we've got a big crowd today. A lot of those folks are here because we're recognizing school counselors and also our Purple Star schools. We are going to ask those folks very quickly to stay, or not very quickly to stay, to stay for a few minutes for some quick photographs. What we're going to do first, we have another presentation. But when we adjourn, we're going to ask all the folks who are here with Purple Star schools to please come down front. We'll move the board. We'll all stay up here. We'll move to the middle though. And we'll do one big photo here. And then we're going to ask the same thing with all the counselors who are here and won awards and, and any administrators or others who are with them. So we'll do two pictures together. And then, I know some of you want individual pictures with your board members and we'll, we'll do that after, after that. But please, we'll do two big pictures before everybody gets away from us. And we have a very special guest with us today, Governor, Dr. Dennis Willingham, the superintendent in Walker County, District Seven, Ms. McCray's area. So I'm going to ask him to come down. We'll turn it over to him. I'll tell you that we're working statewide and we have some other guests who are with us on improving schools and something, a very particular model through the Marzano Works called Solution Tree. And we have two schools, I think two, I may get that wrong. Dr. Willingham is going to straighten out everything I misspeak about. But the first schools in our state to earn this very distinguished national title are in Walker County. And I am, unfortunately, was unable to go up and join them when they made the big announcement in Walker County earlier this summer. Wish that I could have been there, but they've been gracious to come here with us. Also remind you, or I'm reminded, we had Jeff Jones, I didn't get to meet these folks ahead of time, so I hope they're here. Is Jeff here? The CEO of Solution Tree and Dr. Cameron Rains, the Executive Vice President of Solution Tree, are also with us today, traveled. And that's two, two CEOs of major corporations that work across this country who've been with us in the last couple of months. And so we thank you for taking the time to travel to Montgomery. And we thank you for your recognition of Walker County schools. And we turn it over to Superintendent Willingham.
Thank you.
Turn that on.
Let me turn his mic off.
There you go.
All right. Is this better? Thank you. Good morning, Governor Ivey, Superintendent Mackey, board members. Specifically, our board member, Representative Ms. McCray. Thank you. It's such an honor to stand before you today. I also want to thank you for the historical accomplishments that have taken place from the decisions that you've made as you've been sitting in your seats. Thank you for the job you do. God has shown great favor to the Walker County school system. It's my honor to be the superintendent there. And we're here today to recognize three of our schools. Dr. Mackey, originally it was two, but, but we had an elementary school to, to just slide right in there, right in time. So at this time, I'd like to ask that Principal Adner and the team from Door High School to please stand. Also, Principal Freeman and the team from Bankhead Middle School to please stand. And Principal Williams and the team from Cordova Elementary. These are the first, this is the first high school, the first middle school, and the first elementary school in the state of Alabama to reach Level One certification for Marzano's high reliability schools. So in a nutshell, this has meant a lot to our school system because it has allowed us to systematically analyze our strengths and then to spotlight and to celebrate those strengths. And also to systematically analyze our weaknesses and make improvements with those weaknesses. Most importantly, it's what's best for kids. So we're honored to be a part of this. As Dr. Mackey often says in our meetings, I'm going to echo this. These accomplishments come because I have a great team around me. And I have great people that work around me, and I'm thankful for that. And some of these folks just stood up. But I do want to introduce someone from the central office who really put this vision together for us. This is Dr. Tanya Guin, and I would like to ask that you give her just a couple of minutes to explain a little bit more in detail about the Marzano High Reliability School process.
Dr. Guin.
Thank you, Dr. Willingham. I would just like to say thank you for trusting us to be able to bring this forward and actually bring it to fruition. The way we got started was AMSTI offered, it was online learning that Phil Warwick provided through AMSTI. And so my partner, Steve Rowe, and I watched the Zoom meeting and we just decided that we needed to move from a system of schools to a unified school system. And this process has allowed us to do that. It creates conditions for success in our schools and everybody didn't have to do the same thing. You just have to follow the framework in which ensures that you're doing what you say you're doing. And the data has to prove it. You know, it's one thing to say, oh yeah, we're really doing this. But well, where's the data to back it up? It, it requires you to be very reflective in what you're doing within your schools. So, and it's not about compliance. It's about making true change and doing what's right for kids. That's my favorite. Is that the best thing to do for kids? You know, if the adults can benefit, that's great. But is it going to be beneficial for our children? So like, like Dr. Willingham said, we have three schools that have reached HRS Level One certification. And Level One focuses on the safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. And I think they will certainly give some insight to this, but it's all about the PLC process and trusting the process. And that's something that we really had to rethink what we were doing. So I know that they'll, they'll be thankful to get to share their experiences with you. And we are just so excited to have the opportunity to be, to be able to participate in this type of learning.
Governor, as I, as I close my report, the, the partnership that we have with Walker County is exactly what we want to do, obviously, all across the state. State Department didn't come in and tell them what to do. We're not directing their program. But the work that you heard Melissa Shields and Karen Anderson and Bonnie Short, I can't think who else was in there, I think Sandy Ledwell was in there, talking about, it's right. It was kind of her last hurrah with us, talking about the MTSS work. So that, how do we have a combined plan to support districts in what they want to do? And it's about trying to get highly reliable schools all across the state. And, you know, just my greatest congratulations to these three schools who stepped up and said, we're going to lead the way. We're going to be the first in the state. I promise you, I will get text messages by the end of the day, and I hope y'all do too, about how do we get there too. Have 52 more schools that are in process of this. We want to continue to push not just this program. It's one of the great things that, that we do though, our partnership with Solution Tree. But we want all of our schools to be highly reliable. And you're doing great work, Superintendent Willingham and, and Dr. Guin. Thank you for your time this morning and for joining us. And Governor, that concludes my report. I would just remind our folks, don't leave. We're going to do our Purple Stars picture first after adjournment, and then we'll do one with the school counselors.
Dr. Mackey and Governor, I did make the motion about the recognition of the Purple Star schools. And many of my colleagues, fellow superintendents, former superintendents have made the trip, the visit here. And I would like those representatives of Purple Star schools, for those of you who don't know, explain what Purple Star schools is, Dr. Mackey, because you'll do it much better than I would.
So these are schools that have gone through a rigorous assess, self-assessment to show that they are military-friendly communities. And again, we have, I think, 12 districts and 50-something schools in the state.
Y'all please stand. And they're not all from my district, but they're all very outstanding programs. And the military community and our respect in Alabama for military service is certainly something we celebrate. Thank you.
The next elementary and secondary education meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will be held on Thursday, October 13, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. in the Gordon Person's Building Auditorium. The work session will immediately follow the board meeting in Room P is in Papa 103 in the Gordon Person's Building. Is there a motion to adjourn? Well, a motion and a second. All in favor, stand up.
Let me get my Purple Star school folks all right here in the front, please. Charles will get you in the, get us center.